11:02 PM. Ms. Howe, would you please call the room?
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Williams. Ms. Schilling. Mr. Magnner.
Here.
Ms. Shulis.
Here.
Mr. Callie.
Here.
Mr. Pape.
Here.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Thank you. If you will please join me for tonight's prayer and pledge. Lord my Father, I thank you tonight for this community, our friends, our neighbors. I thank you for the rain that you provided for this springtime. I ask for your guidance and wisdom tonight, and I appreciate your assistance with this meeting. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move, uh, next item to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mayor Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Schilling. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Mayor Anderson? Aye. Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Agenda has been approved. Ms. Howe, we have no citizen comments, correct?
That's correct.
Next item on the agenda is approval of tonight's minutes. Uh, entertain a motion.
Point of order, it's the minutes from April 22nd.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, as a reminder, uh, per Mr. McDonald, this was the special meeting from April 22nd.
And I motion to approve.
McDonald, do we have a second?
Second.
Anderson, thank you. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson? Aye. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Abstain.
Mr. Pape?
Abstain.
Minutes from the April 22nd meeting have been approved. Moving on, we have no items of old business, so we'll move directly into new business. First item is item number one, PC Resolution, PC dash 22 dash 25. This is the annexation of, uh, a property on Cox Pike. It's a 53.162 acre, map 43, parcel 15, 52, and 53. Property owner is Marlon Cunningham. Uh, Mr. Greer, would you please, uh, first read your staff report?
Mr. Cunningham, uh, owner of the property, has submitted to the city of Fairview an annexation request for three parcels located south of Old Cox Pike. The parcels are tax map 43, parcel 15, parcel 52, and parcel 53. Tax map 43, parcel 15 is located at 7119 Old Cox Pike. Tax map 43, parcel 53 is located east of 7119 Old Cox Pike. And parcel 52 is located south of 7119 Old Cox Pike, and west and south of tax map 43, parcel 53. The properties contain a total of 53.162 acres and are currently zoned Williamson County MGA 5. All three parcels are located within the urban growth boundary of the city of Fairview. Additionally, the parcels are contiguous to the current Fairview municipal boundaries due to the Pinecrest subdivision being located to the east of the three parcels proposed for annexation. The parcels located to the north are located within Williamson County and zoned MGA 1 and MGA 5. The parcels to the south and west are located within Williamson County and zoned MGA 5. The properties to the east are located within the city of Fairview and are zoned R21 and 2 family residential. The Fairview Forward 2040 Plan, uh, two of the properties, tax map 43, parcel 52 and 53, are classified as new residential medium neighborhood. This future land use classification notes appropriate land uses as single-family detached residential, single-family attached residential, mixed-use, commercial, office, multifamily residential, and civic institutional. The new residential medium neighborhood lists three zone districts as appropriate, RS 40, R20 with a pud, and a new district that would permit traditional neighborhood development. The third and final property requested for annexation, parcel 15, is classified as future land use rural settlement. The rural settlement future land use classification lists two land uses as appropriate and five zone districts as appropriate. The two land uses are agriculture and single-family detached residential. The appropriate zone districts are AR 15, AR 5, RS 40, and R20. The property owner has indicated and requested these three properties to be rezoned to R20. As we have done with annexations tonight, you will only be addressing the annexation of this parcel. At the June meeting, you will address the zoning of this parcel. The request is for this to ultimately be rezoned to R20. Uh, staff recommends the planning commission provide a recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to annex three properties located on Old Cox Pike, identified as tax map 43, parcel 15, and parcel 52, and parcel 53, as indicated in the attached map. This annexation request does have one condition, uh, that it will be placed on Thursday, June 5th, Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda for consideration, with the potential for the public hearing and second reading to be held on Thursday, July 1st, Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Just for one item of clarification before we move for motion. Uh, we are looking at annexation only. This is not rezoning. So as we move for motion here, I just want to make sure that that's clear. Uh, that said, do we, um, I'll entertain a motion for item number one here.
Motion to approve.
Mayor Anderson, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Schilling? Do we have a representative tonight for this application? Good evening, sir. If you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Epps. I'm with Anderson, Duck Eppson Associates, and I'm representing Mr. Cunningham on this.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anything you wish to add before we open up our dialogue?
No, I think that was an excellent staff report. I think they covered all the appropriate items on that.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, we'll open it up now for comments, questions from the planning commission.
Chairman, I have a quick question for the staff. Ethan, you mentioned, um, the zoning would come forward in June, but it looks like the annexation wouldn't actually take place until, um, but, at the Board of Commissioners' level, until maybe July. Wouldn't we want to wait until it's formal at the Board of Commissioners before we bring it forward for the zoning?
So, previously, uh, in the history of Fairview, annexation is ran concurrent with the zoning. Uh, with this property and with rereading and making sure we are getting our rules and regulations correct, annexation, uh, comes in, a property would come into the city of Fairview per the zoning ordinance as RS 40. Uh, to be able to be rezoned, it would have to be within the planning jurisdiction of the city. And so for this property, uh, it would begin with you tonight with annexation. It would ultimately have two readings at the Board of Commissioners prior to finalization. Uh, our document also states that they can request at the same time the zoning of their, of the annex, future annexed property. So with that, we will run those, uh, one month apart. So the rezoning would go to the planning commission in June, to the Board of Commissioners in July, and then to the Board of Commissioners again in August. So if the annexation were to fail at the Board of Commissioner level at the first read or second read, then the rezoning becomes mute. Uh, but if it, uh, does not fail and passes, then the zoning would continue to follow that approximately two to three weeks after the annexation. They would be able to gain their rezoning.
Okay. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Appreciate it.
Other comments, questions from the planning commission? Okay, thank you. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Mayor Anderson? Aye. Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Nay.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mayor, Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number two, PC Resolution, PC dash 23 dash 25. Revised Master Development Plan, Chester Road Townhomes, map 42, parcel 142. Current zoning is RM 8. Property owner, Phillips Builders. Uh, Mr. Greer, would you please start us out with the staff report?
Mr. John Richard Patterson has submitted on behalf of Phillips Builders a revised master development plan for the Chester Road Townhomes development. The project is a multifamily residential development that consists of 124 townhomes, private rights-of-way, stormwater infrastructure, and open spaces. The parcel, tax map 42, parcel 142, is zoned multifamily RM 8 and contains 33.29 acres. The Chester Road Townhomes Master Development Plan was approved by the Fairview Planning Commission at the February 13th, 2024 meeting. The residential development plan for Chester Road Townhomes was approved at the November 12th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. The proposed revisions to the master development are summarized in the table below. Um, in your packet, you have the approved master development plan and a revised plan. The approved plan has 114 units, 53 two-bedroom units, 61 three-bedroom units, 106 surface parking spaces, 61 driveway spaces, 61 garage spaces, 10.31 acres of impervious area, and 5.23 acres of pervious area. The revised plan has 124 units, so an increase of 10. 124 two-bedroom units, uh, eliminating the three-bedroom plan. 248 surface parking spaces, which eliminates the driveway and gar- garage spaces. 10.64 acres of impervious area and 5.04 acres of pervious area. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the parcel that contains the Chester Road Townhome development as legacy neighborhood, uh, residential medium. The legacy neighborhood classification notes the appropriate land use as single-family detached residential. The classification lists two zone districts as appropriate, RS 40 and R20. The current property zoning is RM 8. This zone district, although not in alignment with the listed zone districts, is in place, and the multifamily dwelling land use is a permitted land use. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the revised Chester Road Townhome Master Development Plan to construct 124 townhomes, three private roads, two detention ponds, and all necessary stormwater, water, and wastewater infrastructure with the conditions of approval included in Resolution PC 2325. All staff comments to be addressed prior to submission of construction plans.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Uh, we'll entertain a motion for PC 23 dash 25.
Make a motion to approve PC 2325.
Mr. Callie, do we have a second? Calling for a second on the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shulis. Do we have a representative tonight for this application? Sir, if you'd just state your name and address for the record.
Cooper Morris, Kimley Horn, 4031 Aspen Grove Drive, Franklin, Tennessee. Pleasure to be here. Have it answer any questions y'all may have on.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up for comments, questions. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. So I, um, in, in, in preparation for the meeting, digging into the plans that were on IDT, um, not being a professional engineer, understanding really all the different naming conventions that you all use, I was expecting to find, as it's stated on the screen there, a revised master plan development. I did not find that, and, um, it turns out that it was just labeled differently in a different section. For that reason, I didn't have the opportunity to do a side-by-side comparison of the original master plan and the revised. I would personally like to motion to defer this item so that it can be properly named, or now that I'm aware of where it's at, can look, have the time to look into that and properly investigate the changes that are being requested and determine if they're appropriate or not.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion to defer, um, as an amendment to the original motion. Any additional comments, questions to the deferment? Okay, thank you. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote for the deferment?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson? Aye. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald, just for clarification, you would like to defer this for 30 days to the next meeting?
Sorry for not clarifying that. Yeah, just until the next, uh, planning commission meeting.
All right, thank you. So motion to defer by 30 days has, has been approved.
Uh, question for council here, um, city council. Uh, the original motion at that point, does that become void, the fact that it has been deferred? So there's no additional actions needed?
That's correct. So the matter was deferred. It'll just be placed on the agenda at the next stated meeting and, uh, be taken up in new business.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
It could be listed as old business, but it would require a motion to, uh, to action at that time.
All right, thank you. Sir, appreciate you being here tonight. I'm sure the city will be happy to, you know, help you through any additional resubmissions. Thank you. Moving on, last item of the new business, item number three, PC 24 dash 25, final plat, Woodwick Phase 1. This is a 19.87 acre, map 21, parcel 56.03. Current zoning is R20. Property owner, Candlewood Cove LLC. We'll first begin with the staff report. Mr. Greer, please, if you will.
T Squared Engineering has submitted on behalf of Candlewood Cove LLC a final plat for Phase 1 of Woodwick Residential Development. Uh, this development was previously approved as Woodwick. Uh, it has had a name change. It's currently in our system as Woodwick, but the plat does have Orange Shire subdivision Phase 2. So it will re, be renamed ultimately, Orange Shire subdivision. The Woodwick Residential Development contains a total of 31 single-family detached residential lots within two phases. Phase 1 contains 23 single-family detached residential lots on 19.87 acres, and Phase 2 contains eight lots on 5.37 acres. Phase 1 will create three public rights-of-way, all of which are 50-foot in width, with 5-foot sidewalks and a grass strip separating the sidewalk and travel lanes. Woodwick Drive will provide access to Northwest Highway and will provide a stubout to the property to the east. Woodruff Drive will connect Woodwick Drive to Northwest Highway at the intersection with Orange Shire Drive. Finally, Breeze Wood Drive will provide a connection to Phase 2 of the Woodwick development. Breeze Wood Drive will be a cul-de-sac within Phase 2 and will not provide access to Northwest Highway. Phase 1 contains three open spaces. Open space 2 and 3 contain a detention pond. Open space 2 also contains an existing wetland area that is remaining untouched with the development due to all necessary stream and wetland buffers being provided. Finally, open space 2 contains a cluster mailbox and related parking area. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the final development plat for Phase 1 of the Woodwick Residential Development in order to create 23 single-family detached residential lots, create three new public rights-of-way, create two detention ponds, create three open spaces, provide a location for a mail kiosk, and install all necessary stormwater, water, and wastewater infrastructure as resubmitted on May 5th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. We'll entertain a motion on item number three.
Make a motion to approve PC 2425.
Mr. Callie, do we have a second?
Second.
Mayor Anderson? Do we have a representative tonight for this item? No, thank you. And we'll open it up for comments, questions from the planning commission. The submission was pretty straightforward, I know, so there wasn't a lot to review. All right, hearing none. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson? Aye. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is bonds and letters of credit, which we have none. Last item are the reports and discussion by the various departments. We will first start with the planning staff. Mr. Greer, did you have any comments for the opening or, or the open discussion?
I do. If you'll give me just one moment, we're gonna... Moved too quick tonight, I didn't. Reid, do you mind, uh, putting click share up on the screen, please? So I know that most of you are aware, but under our resources on our city website, we have our city maps. You go to our city maps, we have several different maps that are available. We have our Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Map, our Fairview Area Roadways, our Public Work Zones, and our zoning map. If you click on the zoning map, it will pull up, uh, a document that looks similar to this. We have added an additional public layer that you are now able to add into your map, if you would like. If you go over to the left-hand side, there's layers. You can add the public layer. By content pops up as the top one, new residential development overlay. Click Add into that. It appears best if you go to blending, go down to darken, modify, or multiply. With that, as everything loads in there, you'll be able to see an overlay of all of the projects that are approved currently within the city that are on our new residential, uh, construction sheet that we put out on a monthly basis. You can zoom in and see an overlay of, it's either the approved development plan or a plat if they are already at a platted stage. You can zoom in and see what each development looks like. Um, under the layers, you can expand the layer. Yep. You can expand the layer and go down to any of the layers, uh, any of the developments. If you click the three dots, zoom directly to the layer. But that is, uh, Belvoir, Orange Shire, and Woodwick Cove are in the corners there with Bell Haven across the street. And you are able to see, uh, any of the developments that we have approved. Gives a pretty good perspective of, uh, kind of a bird's-eye view of what we actually do up here as a planning commission and as the Board of Commissioners, and where we are headed as a city. As you zoom out, we have several developments. You can see kind of what the, um, are we overloading along one particular roadway? And kind of as Fairview progresses in development, how those developments will interact with each other. Particularly, you know, we get questions on a, on a weekly basis at a minimum, most of the time on a daily basis about, you know, I have this project going on behind my house. What is this going to look like? So we wanted to make this available to the public. Richard Ross, our public information officer, will be putting out a, um, message on Facebook that has a short, brief video of how to operate the system and get to it. People who are familiar with, uh, ESRI, ArcGIS, fairly simple, but, um, wanted to make it publicly aware that everyone has availability to this and can see all of the projects, um, as they are currently going. You can also change the base map and see, uh, it utilizes Google Maps satellite imagery. And so if there is construction that was occurring prior to November of '24, you can see the active construction sites underneath the overlays. So it's fairly helpful. Um, could definitely be helpful as we are looking at future projects coming before the planning commission of, you know, hey, we're looking at a traffic study, what three or four other developments are contributing to traffic in this particular area? And so just another resource that y'all all have, um, at your fingertips to be able to help make better decisions. Yeah, uh, these are overlays of development plans. The line work is not exact. Uh, it is not perfect by any means, but it does give a pretty good sense of all of the individual projects. And then with that, uh, we have a couple seats, at least a couple. We have three, uh, seats that are expiring at the end of June. We have Ms. Shulis, uh, Mr. Magnner, and Ms. Williams. If you know anyone who is interested in joining the planning commission, I know Mr. Magnner, uh, probably has an announcement here at the end of tonight. But I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for your years of service on the planning commission and, uh, dedication to digging into all of the minute details and coming with some of the best questions that we've, that we have, um, with your attention to detail. So I appreciate that. Um, Ms. Williams' seat, Ms. Shulis' seat, Mr. Magnner's seat, there will be three openings. Uh, anyone who would like to submit an application, you can submit on the city of Fairview's website, or you can call City Hall or call the planning department, or get with any Board of Commissioner member or planning commission representative to submit an application. Those seats will be filled, uh, in July, I believe, at the first July meeting. Uh, with that, Mr. Magnner, I know that you, um, are not going to be available for the June meeting. So Ms. Shulis, are you available for the June meeting?
Yep, I'll be here.
All right. So Ms. Shulis, you will be running the meeting in June. Um, if you have any questions prior to that, please get with us on...
Is it just June, or is it through the rest of?
It will be for June, and then, uh, in July, we will elect a new chairperson and vice chair, um, for the planning commission. But that is all I have. Thank you all for your time and dedication. We'll try to keep it short tonight. Have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. That is useful, too. I'll just remind the public, I think that's an important comment. It's not 100% accurate. That's more of a reference map so that if there's a question about a boundary line or property line, most likely that's not your resource to go through. So just a reminder, I know that's, that's extremely important for most of us. So thank you very much. Tom, uh, city mayor, manager, any comments?
Just one, I wanted to echo, um, Mr. Greer, just, just thank you so much for your service over the years. You've been a vital part of the planning commission. Really, really appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Um, city engineering?
I'll echo that echo. Thank you for your service. Great to work with you, Mr. Magnner.
Thank you. Uh, city attorney, no report, thank you. All right, thank you very much. We'll start, um, here on the panel, following our typical, um, pattern, although it's not set in stone, but I think it's worked pretty well. Mr. Pape?
Uh, just saying, thank you so much for your service over the years to Fairview, and, uh, you'll be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Broken record time, but, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it, it...
Broken record time, but, yeah, it's, it's, it, you know, I know all of our time on these boards is limited, but some of us serve the seat better than others, and I think you have done a fantastic job with the time that you've served on this board, and you will be missed, and I really mean that. Sad to see you go, but I understand.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. Mr. Calley? Well, you did a great job, that's about it, thanks. Yep, thank you very much. Ms. Shulist?
It has been an honor and a privilege to sit next to you as a vice-chair, and you have never made me be the chair, except for next month.
Until next month.
Until next month. And I hope to see you around the two-two-two.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's the building we work in downtown. Mr. King?
Yeah, it's just been, been a pleasure to work with you, Mr. Magnner. Learned from you, and watched kind of how you guys run things, so, I know I've been here a short time, but I've enjoyed it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Schilling?
I say the same thing, and I'm just looking forward to seeing what you do with your yard now that you have even more time.
Thank you very much. Mayor Anderson?
Yes, it's been great serving with you, and you always do your research and are very diligent about going through the packet and knowing exactly what to bring up, so I just appreciate everything you've meant to the board. And, you know, just wish you well in your future endeavors. Also, we have, I just wanted to remind everybody, we have the Around Town Coffee in the morning at eight-thirty AM at Uncle Lenny's. So every, everybody, you know, anyone who wants to come, it's a great event. Our Economic Development Department puts it on, and it's a good time of just, you know, getting together with other business owners and people from the community who really care about what's going on in Fairview.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't really want that to be about me, but I appreciate all the kind words. It has been a pleasure. Fairview's got a great opportunity, great citizens. Thank you for all the folks that show up at all the meetings. My only one last closing comment is just wanted to continue to encourage this board and the Commissioning Board to not only look at the new developments, but the existing residents that are here now and will be here shortly. I think that map is very telling when we see the amount of growth. I experienced firsthand Spring Hill during its initial boom, and it could be challenging and exciting. And, you know, you need to grow, but we need to do so smartly and understand the impact to our infrastructure, our roadways, but also we need some restaurants, we need some shopping. Houses are nice, but commercials, in my opinion, even nicer. So anyway, thank you all, appreciate all the great work that this group has done. Y'all bring a lot of long history here in the community, a lot of great insight, and appreciate it. So we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes, Mayor.
I am so sorry. I meant, I really wanted to thank Ethan for his hard work putting that GIS system together because that is going to help answer a lot of questions for the community, that they have a resource to go and take a look at that. I appreciate all your hard work on that. Sorry.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Calley, motion. Good evening.